Yes, sir.
Give me a chance to get off camera.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the March, or excuse me, April 4th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Mrs. Ragsdale, if you would call the roll.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Mr. Waters.
Here.
Ms. Mace.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Oaks.
Here.
Ms. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Harker.
Here.
Now, join me in a moment of silent prayer and then followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Hearing of the citizens. Anyone signed up?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Okay. All right. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Horn. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Mace.
Both two. It should, it should pop up on the screen. The only difference is.
There we go. There we go.
Now, vote how you want to, then save.
Please cast your votes.
There you go.
And remember to hit save. Thank you. Motion to accept the agenda passes seven to zero. Approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Motion by Mrs. Mace. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Oaks.
I'm sorry.
Chairman's report. I don't have anything this evening. We'll move right into the, to the cases, public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the board supervisors or the Board of zoning appeals. In accomplishing this task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. Case S dash 23 dash 003, Kristy Hicks. Mrs. Ragsdale.
Case S dash 23 dash 003, Kristy Hicks has petitioned for a special use permit on 13.47 acres located on State Road 724, Mill Creek Road, in the Westover Election District to allow for a summer camp. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Kristy Hicks is here to represent the petition.
Okay. Ms. Hicks, would you come forward, please?
I don't have the papers because I thought that my secretary.
They have them in their packet.
Yeah.
So you can just talk.
Just anything that you'd like to, to tell us that I had to.
I have short-term memory. I apologize. That's why I write everything down. I'm here to create a youth day camp to help children learn to garden, horticulture, propagate plants, maybe do some chickens farm, chickens, rabbits, and worms, because worms, you know, create compost for the soil, and also rabbits are kid-friendly, and chickens lay eggs. And I think we're living in a time now where we need to teach children how to grow a garden. I'm a school teacher. I've been a teacher for more than 20 years. I taught at Tunstall Middle School for 17 years. I've been three years with Stony Mill Elementary. And I see a lot of children, when they eat their lunches, they throw their vegetables away in the trash can. I don't think they realize the work that goes into labor of having to grow their vegetables. And I'm really concerned right now with food prices going up and also with what's going on in the rest of the world. I'm sure all of you concerned about, you know, Ukraine and Russia and China. And if Walmart closed down tomorrow, I don't know what we'd do. It'd be crazy. So I'd like to be able to teach children how to do some homesteading activities, like maybe make soap and candles, because we may need it someday. And also, a lot of children spend a lot of time working on their tablets and phones. They don't have many, they don't have much hands-on experience. And I grew up on a farm, so I know a little bit about that, and I like to share it with others.
All right, great.
And I've got a piece of property. It's got a beautiful creek going through it. At one time, it was more than 400 acres. There was a schoolhouse on the property. There was gardens, there was sheds, outbuildings. So what I want to do is not build a commercial place that I don't, I'm not planning on having air conditioning or heating and, or, it won't be in the wintertime, but plumbing or anything, because back in the olden days, people didn't have that to rely on. So most of the activities will be done outside. That's why I've got buildings that's got like little lean-to shelters, like pole barns, things like that, because it's gonna be too hot to work inside. And if someday we lost our electricity, we'd need to know how to not use it. I know this is going back to basics, our roots, but you know, we never know when you have to go back to that. And I think it's just really good for kids. I think they learn more by doing than they do by just teaching them from a book, because I've worked with kids for 20 years, and I've seen them, when you do hands-on activities, it, it grows in their mind, it keeps it there. And I think, from my own family, my nieces and nephews don't normally like vegetables, but we grew a garden last year, and they participated in the actual planting and harvesting. They wanted to try them out, and they ended up liking vegetables. So you gotta find ways to get kids to, you know, like things they don't like.
All right. Thank you.
If you've got any questions, I'd appreciate it.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Hicks?
Just a comment. I think you're doing a great thing.
Thank you. Just pray that I can, you know, do all that I intend to do, because I really want to do something. I hope, I know we've got the casino coming to Danville that's gonna draw a lot of kids in the opposite direction, and I think they need to get back to really basic, basic, I don't know, fundamental, I can't think of the word to say.
Gets them away from this.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and I've, you know, I've been a writing teacher for a number of years, and I ask the students, what do you want to do when you grow up? I mean, probably 70% of my boys say they want to create games, not play basketball or football. They want to create games on a, on a phone. And unfortunately, if, if it comes to that, who's gonna, you know, garden, who's gonna feed us? I think that's important.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Mace.
Ms. Hicks, I too admire you for doing this. I do think, I was raised on the farm, prepared the vegetables for my mom to can and freeze and whatever. Is this what you're gonna teach to as well as canning?
Probably. We haven't, at first, I'm starting out like in small chunks, just basics, and then as I grow and as I get more people to help me out, I've got a couple of people right now that are retired, but they used to work with students, and they're gonna help me. But I think once I get, I'm gonna start a nonprofit organization. Once I get that going, I can get more people to help, I can do more with it. But right now, yeah, absolutely, that's what I plan to do, because they need to know how to can their food.
So is there a limit to how many children will be there each day?
I'm gonna start out with six to 12. It's not gonna be very many at first. If I can acquire more land later, or I can have more facilities built, I can branch out. But right now, I don't want to bite off more than I can chew. And I've already got some students I work with, the parents have agreed this summer to let them come over there, and even, even if I don't have an organization, they want their children to learn how to garden.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Any other?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I love that.
If you want to help out, I'd greatly appreciate it.
I would love that. I, that is right in my wheelhouse. I didn't grow up on a farm. My grandfather kept gardening, both grandfathers did, and one farmed. I didn't appreciate it as a child, but with my children and my nieces and my nephews, I've tried to instill those things, manners and civility, just southern hospitality and charm that's so rare now. For you to take the initiative and to do something like that, a lot of people talk about what's wrong with the youth of today, but very little are willing to get in there and get their hands dirty.
Yeah, speaking of the, the past, I just now left Gretna visiting a friend of mine in the nursing home, and he's been sharing with me lessons on how to turn butter, how to make soap. I've been writing in all the notes, and it's, it's really simple. Did you know that you can make soap out of bones, meat, and ash from a hardwood tree? That's all it took, three things. But if, like I say, none of us know that. And I wouldn't have known if I hadn't been talking to older people, and I'm just, I think we're losing that information, and unless we instill it in our young people, they don't learn that in a textbook, they don't look for it on their phone, and if the internet shut down, they wouldn't be able to find it anywhere. So they're gonna have to have some background knowledge, and it's gonna be people that's going on that's passing it to me that I pass on to them. So hopefully, I can make the world a better place in Pennsylvania County by teaching students how to grow their own vegetables and appreciate and conserve the environment, because I live on Beavis Mill Road, and I spend a lot of time speaking up, picking up trash, because people just, they're not, you know, they're just, they just like to litter. And I think students need to learn, you know, how we need to preserve the water resources. Fortunately for me, last year, I did a garden by myself without any help from anybody else. I bought all the farmer's almanac, almanacs, and I have a piece of property right along the creek. I made, it looks tacky right now, but I made, not really, but I made raised flower beds out of cinder blocks, because I don't have a tractor, and I had a beautiful garden last year. I watered it one time, but being in the bottom, it just kept it, it's partially shaded, it kept it moist all summer long. My friend in Gretna, who's had a garden for 50 years, his didn't do anything. He said, I don't know what happened. I said, maybe it's the soil, maybe it's the moisture, but something I did worked out right, so I'm thinking if I can do it, I know I can teach children to do it, too. In fact, I think something, I think a, a garden is something you could have in your backyard. Everybody in this room, no matter, you can live in development, have a, just a small space, because the cinder blocks I use are four by eights, make one garden. And I can tell you the three ingredients, but it's a secret right now. It's kind of my property, I'll show it to you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Okay. Sorry to take up so much time.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for Ms. Hicks.
Mr. Waters.
Yeah, I appreciate, too, what you're trying to do, and I'd probably send my kids if they were young enough to come, but unfortunately, probably not. But what's your business model? Is it, you bring your child, drop them off, pick them up later?
It's gonna be something.
Is it contract? Are you under a contract? And the staff that you have, have they been vetted, background checks so far?
So far, the three people that's gonna help me, one is Dr. Trevetti's wife. She's, she's not been background checked, but she could be. And another lady, Demetra, she used to work with students, she's retired now. And I've got a few people that are in, in, in the, in my school that's interested in helping me out, but I haven't went through those channels yet. I'm just trying to get a permit at this point. But I would definitely make sure the people that I work with would be, have credentials that would not in any way at all harm a child or discredit, what am I trying to say? But no, I've not did any background checks on any of them yet. But they've all worked for the school system, so hopefully the school checked that out before they hired them, you know? But did I think I didn't answer all your questions? Do you have another question?
Should there be a condition, or what's that?
Oh, you asked me about a contract, too. At this point, just having six to 12 children and me being a nonprofit, I don't expect to charge children to come to it. So my business plan is have parents drop their kids off there, and they're gonna be there for maybe like eight or nine to one, because you can't work in the heat after one o'clock. And I may expand the hours later. I mean, I've, I've never done this before, so I've just gotta see how it works. I'm gonna start working short hours, maybe four to six hours a day, maybe Monday through Thursday. I feel like on Fridays, I like to give, I like to reward kids for all the hard work and maybe give them a fishing trip or do something fun with them that maybe where they're earning their, they're earning their, how can I say that? Like they're earning their hours or something, not child labor, nothing like that. But you know, when kids have to work outside, they go, and we'll rotate different students every week. So they'll come there four days, five days, and then I'll have a different group the next week. And I'm just gonna just play with it and see how it goes and talk to some people. I don't, so far, I don't know anyone who's done, he's doing exactly what I'm doing. I know the City of Danville sent me a, a youth camp flyer this past week where I can take my nephew and niece, so they can go swimming every day, or they can splash in the water, but they're not doing what I'm doing, so I can't really ask them for advice. So it's a different kind of camp. Ms. Excuse me.
Ms. Mace.
I'm sorry. Did you finish? I was gonna say, I'm welcome to any kind of advice.
Oh, I was just sitting here thinking, have you considered the VPI extension agent here in, in Chatham? They may, you might contact them.
I wouldn't have to do that.
They may assist you or have some programs to help you. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
There's two staff recommendations. Did you, did you see both of those? About unified statewide building code regulations and Virginia Department of Health regulations?
Yeah, I'm concerned about that. And can I ask you guys some questions now?
Uh, yeah, we'll get them answered the best we can.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, because this is something that'll be 19th century, and it's gonna be like outdoor buildings, where they're gonna be working outside under shelters, and most of the inside is gonna be for storage of like, I've got somebody donated 2,000 tobacco sticks. I'm gonna put them inside of the buildings so they don't get wet, but we're gonna be mostly working outside there. So I'm, do I, I want this to look like 19th century, so, and I asked, I think it was, I asked Robin last week, if I'm doing outside pole buildings and I want it to look like a farm homestead, and I'm not building houses, now the cabin I'm gonna build is mostly gonna be for like curb appeal or looks. It's gonna be where people can maybe sit on the front porch, I'm gonna have stuff stored, I maybe have a spinning wheel, I have, I'll have things stored inside that I want to keep out of the weather, but it's gonna be such a small area that we're not gonna be able to go in there and just hang out. Now, if it rained or something, we'd have to, you know, shelter or something. But as far as building it up to code, and I know contractors have to have studs every, what, 15 and a half inch on center? I'm not doing, I'm not building a contemporary building, so what kind of guidelines do I have to follow in order to build something that looks antique without it being contemporary? Because I'm not planning on having insulation or anything, because we're not gonna live there, we're not gonna stay inside.
I think it would depend on the use, the ultimate use of the building, and that's something that we can work through with the code official.
Yeah.
If they're mostly for storage, they have certain requirements, and those are a lot looser requirements than if they're gonna be occupied by people. It sounds like most of your buildings will not be occupied by people, so that's, that's probably not a concern. Any buildings that would be occupied by people, there are sections in the code for more historic structures that allow them to retain some of their historic characteristics, such as cabins, and I know Mr. Harker restores those, so he has knowledge about that. And I, I feel like a lot of your structures would fall under a cabin type structure than, than more of a modern stick build. So that's a conversation we can have at a later date.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We will, we will promise to the board that Emily and her staff will get with the applicant afterwards and walk her through what's building codes apply to her and what's not.
Right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Mr. Webb?
Just for, for you guys, I take it the Virginia Department of Health will kinda oversee as far as the number of young youth versus the number of adults that have to be on the, on the premises? Is that part of?
They, they would not have regulation over that. They would have regulation over rest, restrooms, required restrooms. If she is gonna serve food to the children, they would oversee the food regulations to make sure that, that that is done properly. I'm not, the Department of Education normally oversees permitting of daycares and things like that. I'm not sure that that would apply to this type of situation. There are different regulations for camps, but no, the Department of Health, the Department of Health will not oversee that.
Any other questions, Mrs. Hicks? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else signed up to speak to this case?
We do not have anyone signed up.
All right. Then at 7:23, public hearing is closed. Mr. Webb? I believe this one's in your district.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It relates to case S dash 23 dash 003. I recommend the approval towards the zoning board for the day camp.
Motion by Mr. Webb, is there a second?
Is, is that with conditions or without conditions?
With the conditions.
Motion with conditions by Mr. Webb.
I second.
Second by Mrs. Mace. Ready for a vote? Ready for a vote? Has everybody been able to cast a vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
I voted. Mine came up.
It's like we're waiting for one more.
Okay, we're just gonna have to ask for a vote? Isn't he up there yet?
Madam Clerk, could we?
I'm voting yes.
Could we get a voice vote? Please, could you call roll?
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Oaks?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Motion carries seven yes, zero no. Is there any old business?
Just a reminder that next Thursday, we will have the next bi-monthly joint meeting with the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission to review the next proposed changes in the zoning ordinance. This will be the use matrix, and so we will be sending that out probably tomorrow to give you all adequate time to review the material prior to the meeting.
Okay.
And that will be at 5:30 in this room on Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Or Wednesday, I'm sorry.
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes.
All right, any other old business?
Do not have any other old business.
Any new business?
Um, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce the Planning Commission to the new county administrator, Mr. Stuart Terrell, and I will allow him to come up and introduce himself to you all.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, Stuart Terrell. I'm the new county administrator. Grew up in Lynchburg. Used to come down to Danville, and there was a guy on the Danville tennis team that used to always beat me. His name was Lucius. If anybody knows him, let me know.
All right.
Uh, I'd just like to say I'm really happy to be here, and I think this is a really critical time in the life of the county, and so I want to thank you individually for being here and putting in the time, because land, in my assessment, prior to my arrival, the land you have here is your best and most valuable asset and must be treated like gold. And you folks are in a place where you have some impact on that, and so it's important that you, as the citizens, get involved and engaged with the future of how the land will be used, because this is what you have that makes you so unique in America, okay? So, I want to thank you for your individual time and commitment. It's not taken for granted by any of us at staff, and we value it highly as staff, and I think the community does as well. So, I want to thank you all for your commitment to this county. And my door's always open if you ever want to come and talk about anything.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Any other new business?
Mr. Chairman, just to let you all know, we will have a meeting next month. We're making up for our late meeting this month.
Yep.
We have seven cases next month. They seem, seem pretty straightforward, so hopefully it won't be too long of a meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Ragsdale. Mr. Horn?
It, it does not fall under new business per se, but as a Planning Commission and as a representative of Pennsylvania County, I think it only fitting that we express our condolences to Tim Chessa. He's the Danville District Supervisor, but he and Amy, his wife, lost his daughter-in-law the day before yesterday to a long battle of cancer, a 27 years old, and cancer took her away. Tim and Amy have had a rough couple of years, and I'd just like to publicly say, you know, our condolences.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Horn. Definitely keep that family in our, in our prayers. Anything else? If not, then at 7:30, we're adjourned.